Oh, Tuesday. Oh my god, is that a blind guy gonna get hit by a car? I think it might be that. Um, he's got a stick, can you see? He's looking, ah, he appears to be looking at something. Is this a blind guy or a walking thing? It's not a blind cane, I think he can see and he just walked across the street, but this cane kinda looked like a not seeing kind of cane, but it doesn't appear to be one of those medical canes, which I'm not sure if they do anything different than a regular one other than being lightweight, maybe a little blind people cane. What is this guy doing? Uh, where you going, guy? Off to the side. Number eighty two. Woo! Oh, boom! Oh, hello friends and neighbors. Welcome to another production of the here on TV once again, once a day, every day, turn machines and move. Forever. I'm alive, I'm in all the way back around here to Tuesday. Who would have thought I would have made it this far? Why you thinking? Stop with the thinking. It's another day, it's just another day. It's just a place, it's just a place. Hey, where you gonna go? I don't wanna go to, uh, you know, anywhere, anywhere you don't wanna go. Why do you wanna go there? It's just a place. Everything is just a place, every place is just a place. I don't wanna go to the torturers chambers. You don't want the torturers chambers, right? It's just a place, it's just a place. It's just a place where the torturers does his torturing. From the torture chambers. Uh, Tuesday, today, I had a four day weekend, I'm experiencing one right now. Um, well, I guess it was over because my day would be over at my job. So, once I, once I hit, so I'm looking at the thing. When I buy these days off, I'm like looking at the clock and being like, people are doing that thing that I'm not doing right now? Look at that, look at them do that thing, or do not do this thing. I'm here not doing nothing, we're out here doing our thing, you know? I have a voice. A couple more spaghetti. I'm almost done spaghetti, but it did last me like basically the entire weekend. Which is good, um, it's been a good room, it's been a good spaghetti room. I don't wanna make curry next. I'm getting on these stew cakes. I'm on a stew cook. I gotta get some carrots though. Carrots will make the difference. Um, yeah, Tuesday. Kinda like a real day, kinda like the real days, but it's, um, hmm, kind of a regular day because of, uh, not working, but then I'm gonna go back to work, but only for a few days, so. Last days before I have to have another weekend as well. From multiple levels here. Um, yesterday I was here on Monday, right? Was I here? I think I was here, I hope I was here. It was a Monday. I'm here in the evening. Cause I was at, um, porch fest all day. Like in the, from the early afternoon till the evening. I was over there at porch fest. Pitches debating, watching. What a good time. And, uh, let's see, did that whole thing, went to, uh, well, you know, what else, what else was I doing? I was there, I was, uh, watching that thing happen. I was, uh, here eating spaghetti. Eating more spaghetti. Um, finish it up, oh, you know what I didn't do is squeeze my meat. But I did get a new white t-shirt. And it's not, it's unsoiled, so I'm thinking about getting, you know, pasta sauce on a white t-shirt. And they said, no, they're white. But, uh, yeah, she wants the spaghetti. I hate the spaghetti, I want to, uh, um, nowhere, which is, last night was Friday, cause it was, it was, you know, Monday, last night was Monday. So it could have been like two days, but, um, today I had four days. It was Monday, on Monday I was here in the evening. Talked to Chuck for a long time after a while, Chuck, not hearing from Chuck. So Chuck is not dead. Um, you know, it could have happened in the last day or so, I don't think so, there's no reason to think so, that's a weird thing to say. Um, which one did I do now? I'm not dead. Hey, don't, don't mind me. I haven't killed five people. I haven't killed five people. Oh yeah? Why are you saying that? Nice to meet you, I haven't killed five people. What? What? He's not dead, hey, what, nice to meet you. I'm alive. I'm not dead. I'm not a dead person. Um, yeah, yesterday was coming the evening when I home, stayed up late watching TV. Um, the other day I saw the Toxic Avenger, Toxic Avenger re- remake movie. And it was good, it was a good movie. But it was no Toxic Avenger nineteen eighty four, cause I went back and I watched Toxic Avenger nineteen eighty four, and that movie was really good. Um, so, we'll watch that, we'll watch that movie. Make me thinking about watching these trauma movies on videos back in the, in the days. Um, and I'm also still thinking about the, the context of media that I experienced and, um, cause these VHS rental shops, you know, were only around from around like, you know, eighty, eighty eight till like two thousand ten? Has it been that long since they started closing down? They were everywhere, other than just other stores. Um, but, uh, like I don't know what, what other kind of store, like entire whole, whole kind of thing was there. Um, at one point and has gone away since, like the, you know, the eighties or whatever. Uh, you know, like, um, um, bell, bell bottom. Like the entire store is just gone. Um, and that movie The Blues Brothers were dropping their toys for us. Well, time, time's moving forward. And, uh, I guess I'm on the, I'm on the ride of time. No more Toys R Us, no more video stores. I guess that's gonna be going to streaming, streams. Um, today I went to Walmart, cause I had, I ran out of windshield wiper fluid on my vehicle over there. I get shit on a lot, um, which I should probably use like the, or I have an electric car. So, I never went to the gas station, so I never get, like, use those, uh, squeegees? Sometimes I'm gonna, I'm gonna go to the gas station dressed for a squeegee. Uh, cause I need to squeegee my windshield. And, uh, I'm gonna pull up to the gas station and use their squeegee and leave. But I get shit on all the time by the birds, and it hasn't been raining, I'm waiting for the rain. Here, just get a hose. But, uh, it's been raining, hasn't been raining, birds shitting on my car. And, um, I need to wipe it off, so I'm using the windshield wiper solution, you know, the thing, pull it back, squirt some windshield wiper solution on, on the car, and then I think it ran out, I thought I had run out. So, I got some more fluid and I put it in the car. Um, I went to Walmart today to get the fluid, but I also ended up getting these shirts. See? And, um, I got a, uh, 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 phone for, for my home, for Wi-Fi phone, which is what I do is to just buy the, um, the, the, the cheap phone, and then I just use it for Wi-Fi, and then I can make calls at home on it. If the other one breaks, I can still like ask it questions. And then I just leave it at home and I don't pay the service fee. So, now I gotta stop and then I gotta buy it in the back. If you buy any kind of electronics, you gotta buy it in the back of Walmart, um. Walmart's in the process of re, um, like organizing the store. It's weird to see, cause I'm pretty familiar with that Walmart, I, I probably go there at least once a month, maybe more. That's where I get things, I guess I like, I like Walmart. You know, it's like scary and evil and everybody works there for like not good money and then, um, that's like what becomes where products come from and it's hard to imagine buying a product from like some guy. Like this guy selling products with, it's like, oh, but this product's available at Walmart. This is where you buy your things from. Like Walmart has things, you need some stuff, you need some things, you can get it at Walmart for money, and then you go to Walmart and you give them the money. You, you're kind of seems like they have, like that's where you buy, I mean, it's where you buy your things, right? Like you want things? But there's so many places you can go and just like call a guy and be like, hey, can you give me a shirt? So, well, it's a wild world out there, it's a wild world. But I got my thing in the back and, um, I had to wait for somebody to come out to sell me the thing. And I was asking everybody with the radio, all the people who work at Walmart. I'm like, hey, can you get somebody to go back there? And they said, no. They're like, uh, and they were trying to avoid me too, which is, I think that's good. But, why are you talking to me? Why are you talking to me? I'm looking at Walmart right now, but don't, no need, no need for this. So, uh, yeah, and there was no need to talk to anybody, I just kinda waited, but I did get all my stuff, but then when I was leaving, I kinda had a handful of stuff that I had carried from the back of the store, usually all the, um, the cash register stores are at the front of the store. And Walmart also no longer has bags. So, I'm just like carrying a bag, I'm carrying this bag from, um, I mean, no bag, so I'm just carrying all my stuff, so I got like, I got like windshield wiper solution and these shirts, and I got a Gatorade, and I got a, um, you know, this phone and a funnel, and I'm just carrying it all loose in my hands the whole time. Through the store that I had bought the stuff in the back of the store. And then you remove the store, you know? And, nobody knows. So, you could just easily walk out with all our stuff and they're not gonna find you, or even, they're not even gonna know it happened for a long time. Like all these guns and stuff, if somebody wants them, like everything at that store eventually is gonna be in somebody's home, that's what the idea is. And there's a lot of stuff in there. And, uh, who knows who's gonna go get that stuff. It's a weird time, the manufacturer, it seems manufacturing all the stuff, putting it out Walmart, and then you go to Walmart and you can take it with you. What a life.
You know, I, I'm up, uh, I'm in, uh, Lewis County right now in, uh, downtown Australia, and, okay, it's like sixteen minutes after seven o'clock in the morning, and I just, uh, listened to one of the local radio stations, KELA, right? And KELA is talking about the prosecuting attorney from Lewis County, the Lewis County prosecutor, prosecuting attorney has got to be one of the biggest blowhard, uh, he must think everybody's stupid. He sat there and said, a reason why people wanna be prosecuted in Thurston County versus Lewis County is because they're a lot softer on crime in Thurston County.
Oh, yeah?
And, and he was specifically referencing, uh, homeless people and everything like that, I get it, okay, all right. What the, uh, dumb dumb, uh, prosecuting attorney from, uh, Lewis County didn't real, uh, realize is that, you know, his, his office took up a case from the Calis County Sheriff's Office that, um, uh, had to do with a, uh, allegedly corrupt Washington State Patrolman who was stealing from businesses in Woodland, Washington. The Calis County Sheriff's Office investigated the matter and referred to the, uh, the Lewis County Prosecuting Attorney's Office, which hasn't taken action on it, they haven't said yes or no, they're still investigating it. But I tell you, if they, if, if, uh, the, that case had to do with a homeless guy, the guy would, would have been in Wal- Walla State Penitentiary by now. Instead, the guy is a, uh, his name is, uh, it, it doesn't, uh, uh, come to my mind right quick, but, uh, in- instead the guy is a Washington State Patrolman or a former Washington State Patrolman, and he gets, uh, some kind of preferential treatment, some kind of a second chance, a lifeline, some kind of a, uh, attaboy, uh, do paperwork and, uh, uh, we'll, we'll forget all about this type of a, a, a secret probation, double secret probation, just like on that movie, uh, Animal House, you know? And
I don't know about that.
I, 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 I just, I can't take, I can't take it, I can't take the double standard, I can't take the, 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 these public officials who just think that people are just a bunch of morons who can't see the favoritism that they deal out on a daily basis, on a weekly basis, on a yearly basis. And I've had enough. And I'm, I'm gonna call up the Lewis County Prosecuting Attorney's Office and tell them he's
That's always what? Yeah, Chuck got cut out there, but, uh, I can imagine. This is a blowhard. Hello? Lewis County Prosecuting Attorney? Here, blowhard. I got my spaghetti, I gotta take my bowls with me. I think there 's nothing. That was eight years ago. Okay. Up to you, huh? Nope. Alright, bye. Bye. Remember that one?
I feel catch a disease like they got, uh, what I'm watching.
Yeah, don't get a disease, don't, uh, fight people or chickens, bye.
Yeah, don't get a disease.
The past, remember yesterday, we were this new tape, doing this new tape thing until we get the old one back, we had that Friday deal, the timer's gone somewhere, I have one finger, one finger, one less finger, and bro, we're losing our fingers. How are you doing? I feel good, okay, thank you. Thank you.
Yeah, uh, today, uh, a little bit, uh, things changed a little bit today. I, uh, um, made, uh, telephonic contact with a, uh, Lewis County Commissioner. Uh, his first name is Sean, I'll just, uh, leave it at that. And, uh, we debated, uh, the whole issue of homelessness and, uh, the reason why he brought up Thurston County and, uh, their perceived leniency to homelessness. And, uh, the fact that he's a Republican. And the fact that he's a Republican in a district, uh, in a, in, in a, uh, county that has a, is protecting a Republican from Calis County, uh, of corruption, it, it's, it's a big deal, and, um, I, uh, called Sean, the County Commissioner from Thurston County, and I asked him a couple of questions. Uh, I did not ask him if he ever watches, uh, uh, Your Daily Hour with me, uh, but maybe tonight, somehow, some way, this is gonna find, uh, on Commissioner Sean from Lewis County's feed, just like, uh, the Chuck tape from Germany showed up on my feed a couple days ago, you know what I'm saying? Yep, it could well happen. So I'm, I'm wishing to the, uh, YouTube gods that this show goes out to, uh, Sean, the County Commissioner from Cali- uh, from Lewis County. Thank you for taking my call today. I appreciate it sparring with a Trump loyalist and, uh, somebody who, uh, has, uh, revealed themselves to really get to know their community. You know, he didn't even know that, um, for fifty, maybe sixty years that Chehalis was along the I- five corridor, how long has I- five been a thing? And all this time, there's been people along the I- five corridor that are experiencing homelessness, and in Chehalis, there's this jackass named Sean who doesn't know that, and is convicted, oh, oh, he is convinced that it's somehow Thurston County's fault. This is how stupid politics in Washington State has become.
Oh, this is a blame game, Chuck. It's a blame game, I don't know where twenty twenty one is, it'll turn up. Who do you wanna blame? Uh, where's twenty twenty one? Did you fix the phones yet? Did you, uh, become AI by future? Fix the phones, I don't know if I become AI anymore. The past, it's Monday, and I got a burrito, do you go to the clubhouse, is it Labor Day? Did you labor Mr. Ginsens a human scale? By future, I can measure anything. Mr. Ginsens a human scale. How about these commercials, where's the, um? Ding. Start, please, frog.
Yes, your brother. I thought it was your wife.
I thought it was your wife. Hey, that was the Mean Joke Butt Guy. All these guys with their butts on their heads, they're a big part of the show, every time I, uh, go to it. Is this the intro? Where's the, um, here.
Be dry and buy Hyundai cars that make sense.
Let's see what I got here. Oh, it's a meatloaf sandwich, yeah! Hey, how you guys doing? That feels like meatloaf.
It's the new flame broiled meatloaf sandwich. Flame broiled meatloaf patty with onions and ketchup. Would you like to try this?
That's pretty good.
It's very delicious.
How's it taste?
Oh honey, you're a trump
You know, that also comes in a dinner basket. It's the new flame broiled meatloaf sandwich. You just can't get it over there. It's your way, right away.
I love this place.
I love this meatloaf sandwich.
I'm sure. Sure. I'm sure. Sure. I'm sure. When dryness really counts, be sure to be dry. Sure solid has the most effective wetness fighting ingredient you can buy for dry
Nice wetness.
So you're either sure or unsure. Sure. I'm sure. Be sure to be dry.
Don't wanna be wet.
We have a scoop for you. The same scoop with its all new one point five liter twelve valve turbocharged engine that won this year's Grumman Pike Speed Race is now out to win with your heart. The Scoop Turbo from Hyundai, cars that make sense.
Ooh, chocolate. Rainy.
We'd never leave you in the dark. Experience Milky Way dark.
It's very I don't even know it.
I love this place. Flame broiled meatloaf topped with ketchup and raw onions on sesame seed butter.
It's delicious.
I love this place.
I love meatloaf. Meatloaf is very similar to, um, hamburger.
Hello?
Hello, Chuck?
Hello, hello?
Hello, it's a program on TV, how are you?
Good, good. Just, uh, uh, on rampage today.
Yeah, calling politicians?
I sure did.
You like meatloaf?
Yeah.
They had meatloaf sandwich at Burger King in the nineties.
I liked meatloaf with, uh, gravy.
Yeah, I didn't know that they had meatloaf in the nineties. Did you even have that? Probably already asked you.
I didn't, I, uh, I didn't know that either. I, I overlooked that when I lived, had to go through that.
It might have been only, maybe they didn't have it in Washington. Cause this type of-
Uh, what are you saying? That, uh, people from Washington like meatloaf with gravy?
Uh, well, you do, I, I like it with, um, barbecue sauce.
Oh, yeah, it, yeah.
The, the, the video, the video that I got that was the barbecue commercial from the nineties is from Colorado. So, maybe they only had the meatloaf in Colorado, but they have the, the woman from Mad TV is advertising it, so it seems like it's a big deal.
Mad TV, oh my god.
She was advertising the meatloaf sandwich. So I love this place. I love meatloaf. Um, well, you're, uh, you're, would you talk to the actual guy?
The, the County Commissioner?
Yeah.
Yeah, I talked to him, uh, he called me back after I called his office.
Yeah, when, wh- what does, what does the County Commissioner do?
Uh, the, the, the same thing as a city council person does, except at the county level.
Oh, okay. Is there, so it was like, there's city councils and county councils, are they both, are running at the same time?
They, the, the county gets monies from, uh, the jurisdiction inside the county, like Thurston County or Lewis County. And, uh, they get money from the state, uh, depending on the population and their needs and requests and everything like that. So, uh, um, yeah, I, the, the guy over, the, the, the guy that I talked to is really just, uh, uh, a, um, you know, um, a, a Donald Trump guy and that's it. That, that's all you need to know, really.
How do you get that position?
You have to run for it. So you gotta go, uh, run around your county and throw up signs in people's yards and talk to people and all that stuff.
Yeah, it's an elected position?
Yeah.
I mean, is you have the, uh, uh, I mean, I, 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 a lot of people are Trump guys. It's hard to, it's hard to tell what the bubble, cause there's like a bubble, which bubble are, are we in? You know? I don't know anymore.
This guy, uh, ran around, he, okay, let me just, he had, uh, signs all around Lewis County that looked like, um, American, uh, what's the, uh, oh my god. Uh, he had a, he had symbols on there comparison to the, uh, superhero, uh, Captain America or uh, Captain, yeah, yeah, yeah. So he was trying to invoke that kind of, uh, uh, persona with his voters and he ended up being just a big ol' pussy.
Oh no, no.
Who can't take a couple of questions. Oh man, how pathetic.
What'd you, what'd happen?
Uh, well, I ca- I called him. I said, you know, you, you guys, uh, he, I heard you on the radio bashing homeless people and, uh, uh, but really you guys, uh, wanna punch down on people and, uh, try to hurt them and go after homeless people and saying they're because of drugs and everything, eh, da-da, all this stuff. And then you have a, uh, um, uh, a former mayor in Woburn, Washington, you're protecting, uh, and he's been accused of, uh, a felony. And, uh, that, that, that's it. You know, that's, that's really- Huh?
What felony is it?
Uh, it, he, um, allegedly stole from a business that he was involved in. And this is not the second time that he's been, uh, accused of, uh, financial stuff. Though the City of Woburn had, uh, accused him of inappropriate use of his government credit card before. So, I mean, uh, which is basically stealing. And, um, so anyway, yeah, he has been accused before of, of, uh, money, uh, pho- phony baloney money stuff. And this guy's still getting paid. He works for the Washington Department, uh, well, he works for, uh, uh, the State Patrol. And so, um, that's another thing that, uh, is really tough for the, for this thing because, you know, the, the, the State Patrol is paying him money, but they can't trust him with his job. That's the other tough thing about this.
He used to be the mayor, but now he's a patrol guy?
He's not even a patrol guy. Because they, the guy, the, the Washington State thinks that this guy might steal from other people. He probably has. That's all we know.
Yeah, well, mayor, yeah. Embarrassing and stealing. That's the kinda crime. Like, uh, people are, are committing the crimes on, going to the stores and stealing the money, but, uh, that's where the lo- the bigger crimes are.
Well, he, he should have been smarter about it and he should have just started sending invoices to people.
Yeah.
Uh, you know what I mean? I mean, duh.
But you talked to him on the phone? And he's the actual guy?
I didn't talk, I didn't talk to the mayor. No, I didn't talk to the guy that's being accused of this. I just talked to a bunch of people that are, like, in charge of government that, um, oversee, like, money that's going to support this son of a bitch.
Yeah, did you tell them you live in a van?
Huh?
I live in a van and I wanna tell you something.
Yeah, I said, I, um, I live in a van and I'm a correspondent with your Daily Hour with me.
Yeah, journalism. You do journalism?
Yeah. My name's, uh, uh, what is it? Uh, what's his name? From CNN.
Tom Kate?
Uh.
Nico, this is Nick Robertson reporting live from downtown Olympia, where they had just opened fire on the state Capitol. Holy shit.
Yeah, and he's, uh, the County Commissioner. How many County Commissioners are there?
Uh, for, uh, Lewis County, there's three, I believe.
Mm-hmm. And he's one of them and, um, what'd you, and when you, you were trying to talk to him about his radio appearance?
Yeah, because he, 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 uh, started to talk about Thurston County and that really pissed me off because I can't, I, I mean, why would somebody go after a neighboring county? And saying that, "Well, it's a lot easier to commit a crime in Thurston County than it is in Lewis County." Oh yeah, alright, yeah, okay. Uh, and, and then referring to homelessness, you know? Um, I guess he felt that, uh, Thurston County is, uh, giving Lewis County a lot of their quote-unquote homeless problems and, uh, just buying into, uh, which is nonsense. I told him, "You know what, buddy? This problem has been going on for fifty-plus years because you guys are along the I five corridor. You're one of those cities between Seattle and Portland that are always going to have a problem with homelessness. And after you're long gone from that stupid position that you hold, when you go back to selling concrete or whatever you do, there's still gonna be people that are homeless going through your city. Okay? That's the b- bottom line there, sucker. Okay? And, uh, um, you know, there's nothing that you or Thurston County or Lewis County, uh, your, your stupid appearance on any talk show is gonna do anything about it. That, tha- that's what I told him.
That's what they, that's why they call them transients. You know, they're, I think they're, they're traveling around, right? Like they're going to-
Whatever you wanna call them, uh, the, the fact of the matter is that, that, uh, this idiot from Lewis County getting on the radio and talking shit about Thurston County is not gonna do anybody but a, a bunch of good, but it's just partisan politics bullshit. That's all it is. Cause he knows that Thurston County is a democratically-run city, uh, uh, a county. And, uh, he, he just wanted to, uh, um, jab at them.
Yeah, who's running, um, the, 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 the Thurston County person that's gonna go fight them? Um, where's the Thurston County?
I don't know.
There's, how many Thurston County Commissioners are there?
I think there's four or five.
Why are there like so many, so many levels of government? I guess these people are doing like the un- the unincorporated zones or something? Helping run the unincorporated zones?
Yeah, I, I, well, Thurston County is a little bit different because, uh, there's a, a little bit more pe- there, there's more, uh, popu- population than Lewis County. So, I think that's how it works out there.
There's just so many, so many levels of the governments and what are they do- what's anybody doing?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, I, I like, why do, why do I care so mu- I, I'm from Cowas County and that's two counties away from Thurston County. Why do I care so much about this? And I'll tell you why. It's because we, I don't think that we need people like that that just wanna go out there and talk shit about, uh, other people in, uh, uh, of the local government and then, um, blame them for the issues instead of, uh, coming up with solutions or, um, uh, uh, tr- uh, methods to try to help what the issue is. And that's exactly what this Commissioner, his first name is Sean. And that's all I'm going to, uh, disclose about this Commissioner. His first name is Sean. He, uh, he thinks he's a, uh, superhero and he is a zero. He should, he should-
What?
He should go back to selling cement.
What is he doing? He, he's the prosecutor?
No, he's a County Commissioner. I, I made a mistake and I called this morning and I talked about being a prosecuting attorney and everything like that. I didn't ever talk to, I did talk to the Prosecuting Attorney's Office in Lewis County, but I didn't actually talk to the Prosecuting Attorney. And it had to do with that, uh, Lewis, uh, the, uh, the, the Washington State Patrolman that is accused of theft that we talked about earlier. That's his, his case is being stalled in Lewis County because it's a Republican circle jerk up there.
But it's, um, uh, 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 in Brazil, though, right?
Right, right. He's the mayor guy from Woburn.
Yeah.
And it's all being stalled in, in Lewis County because they're all pretty Republican, uh, circle jerkers.
It's like you go to the, yeah, like, you go to the gas station, there's like a gun or whatever. You don't even need a gun. You say, okay.
Yeah?
No gun.
I don't like the Republicans. Don't tell anybody. And they let you go.
Yeah, but just give, but, y- y- you don't need a gun even. You just go there and you're just like, "Give me the money. Give it to me. I'm threatening you. Give me it." You know, and then like, alright. You know? And then like, like, "I guess, uh, if you say so, here's the money."
I'll see you at Sunday at scho- Sunday School. Son of a bitch.
An emergency vehicle going by. But then like, you know, that guy-
My God!
Um, and then that guy, that guy calls the, you know, the cops or whatever? And he's like-
Yeah.
He's like, "Hey, I got robbed with threats of violence" or whatever. And then they're gonna find you and they'll be like, "Hey, did you rob that place? You got this cash?" And you got the cash. You just have like a pile of cash and, you know, like diapers, like in that movie, um, These are Arizona, Stole Diapers.
I love that movie.
Yeah, but then they find you, you know, they find you down the street and you're, you're in your broken-down car with, with like five hundred dollars and, uh, a bag of diapers. And they're like, "You're going to jail. You're going to jail." You know, but then tomorrow-
Yeah, uh, thing of diapers, five hundred bucks, a shotgun shell in the fucking, uh, uh, a shotgun shell around inside the diapers with a pair of pantyhose on your head and then you're, uh, all sweaty with, uh, uh, what else is going on there? Um, yeah, you're going to jail.
This guy's going to jail. You're going to jail, son. I can't believe you would do that kinda thing. Um, but then like, yeah, it's another guy is like at his desk or something like writing down numbers and he's like, "Two for me, one for you, two for me, one for you." Like forever. And then that guy's getting, you know, millions.
My god.
You know, he's just like, wow.
Like Homer Simpson?
Huh?
Like Homer Simpson?
Penner? Homer Simpson?
Yeah.
Yeah, but that, I mean, even if it's, you might, you might not even be technically committing a crime, you know, but you're, you're getting money from the people. Uh, like-
Like, uh, like Baptist preacher that looks like, uh, the, a demon himself. Have you seen that guy? He said, uh, uh, that were, the people are just demons in a tube, so that's why he had to get his own private jet.
Like, um, what's that? Howard Hughes? Was it Howard Hughes?
No, his name is, uh, he, he was, he was a big time, bro. He's like one of Donald Trump's big, uh, demons.
Like a new guy?
Huh?
He's a Donald Trump demon?
Yeah.
Like, like, he's like, like Hoovin? He's Hoovin and, and like a devil?
Well, he, he really does, like, if you look at his face, he, uh, when he gets angry about something, he, he really does look like a demon. Like, his jaws will kinda protrude out and his eyes will kinda get like, um, like all crazy. And, uh, um, it looks evil. I can't remember his name. I'm trying to find his name right now.
That's kinda scary. It's like, uh, a lot of these people I see, see on TV seem like TV villains.
Oh, Ken- Kenneth Oakland.
Oh, yeah, that, I mean, they'd be like, people seem like villains. It's like, I don't know who's making these TV shows and stuff, but like, doesn't this guy seem like he's like an actual villain from TV? Uh-
That's what I think about, I, and, I mean, dude, I can't help it, but I, I don't mean to turn your show into a political thing, but I can't help it, but like, Donald Trump has people like have turned their whole, like, regime into the, like, the NWO back in the nineteen, or the early two thousands on the, uh, uh, wrestling thing. Like, they're, they're the bad guys when it comes to wrestling.
Yeah. It's like, seems like actual bad guys, but then you wanna be on their side. It's a weird thing. Um-
It really is. It's kinda, it's just, it's just something-
Well, no, I, I kinda think that is that, that whole, the whole thing, uh, like, uh, it's all a distraction from somebody else who's doing it. You know, like-
Well, who about, like Kristi Noem? She's, I mean, and she got mocked in South Park, but she's like, got her own little, like, Randy Savage-type thing going on there. You know? I don't know what's going on with that one.
Some guy, some guy we don't know is doing really bad stuff while the people on TV are clowning around and then that's what's on TV. And then the real stuff's going on underneath and you don't know what's going on. Um, and then all the clowns on TV running around doing their thing where people at like the, you know, at the, like the Pentagon or something.
Wow.
They're doing the stuff where the clowns on TV are running around yelling, you know?
Yeah, man.
I don't know, we don't know. No, I don't really get to know what's going on in, in the real place out there. And I, I'm not gonna try to know, I guess. But it's all, they're all clowns. They're all a bunch of clowns.
And you know, have you seen our governor?
I haven't seen him.
Uh, he looks like the teacher from South Park, except he has hair.
I might have seen him. I think I did see him. I know, I've seen most of the governors. I'm like, um, almost like three blocks away from the Capitol building, you know?
Yeah, I know. You gotta, should, you should, uh, go have lunch with him and say, "Why, why, why are you, why are you doing? Why, why do you do that?"
I'm gonna go have lunch with him and be like, "Can I have some money?" Uh-
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, all that, that's, that's somewhere. Where you, where's the, where's the Van Dei?
Uh, uh, we're, uh, out at SR four, State Route four here, uh, at the county line between, um, Wakayakam and Cowas County, looking at the Columbia River. Wa- looking for, uh, foreign vessels.
Foreign vessels? Like ships?
Yeah.
From, wh- what's a foreign vessel?
Uh, it could be Chinese military. I don't know. There's a, been, there's been a lot of, uh, military activity around here, so I, 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 they're getting ready for something.
You wanna look out for Chinese military boats? You wanna look out for Chinese military boats?
What's that?
Are, are they rowboat? How do you know which ones are which?
Rowboats?
Rowboat, rowboats.
Uh, I don't know.
Cause they're, uh, have you seen any yet?
Have you seen any what?
Foreign vessels?
The only foreign vessels that I see are the car carriers that are, like, from Japan, or South Korea, or, uh, somewhere else, and, I mean, no, no military vessels.
They're on the water?
Yeah. Oh, yeah, there's huge car carriers that go up into Portland from here.
What, they're shipping cars on boats?
Yeah, big, uh, car carriers.
What, and then they put the car, the cars, a bunch of cars on their boats, and then they, they go across the ocean?
It's literally a floating parking lot, like a stadium, a parking lot stadium, and then, uh, they have guys in Portland that, uh, unload the ship, that means they have to get on the ship after the ship docks, and then they drive all their cars off the ship, uh, that are supposed to go there, and I'm sure that they leave some cars behind, because those cars might go to like Seattle, or San Francisco, or San Diego, or, or LA, or Oxnard, or wherever they're going.
Yeah, and then where they're, they're going to the dealerships?
Yeah, and then the people buy them, they're like driving down the street, and then they don't know that that car got there by a ship, and that guy, uh, in their local town drove it off a ship to get it to that, uh, um, store location. They don't know that.
Yeah, I can't even get any shit.
There's like seven miles on that car by the time they get it, or three miles, you know?
You ever been on, you ever been on the ocean in a boat?
In a, in the bo- in a boat, yes. In a ship, I have not, but in a boat, yes, I've been in the ocean.
A regular boat?
Yeah, ship, a fishing boat.
And you go so far out, you can't see the land?
No, no, it was, it was just far enough where you could see the land, and, and the, the ocean was very, yeah. I was in the Atlantic and the Pacific, and both times, uh, the ocean was angry, and those things were like rolling, like, uh, like eight foot swells.
I kinda wanna get on one of those boats. I, I really don't wanna go on a cruise. Cruises are gross to me, you know, but I kinda wanna go in the ocean. I don't know if I, can I get on one of those, uh, maybe I should try to get a, a gig, uh, as a, uh, car, uh, delivery guy?
See if you can get a gig doing, uh, your Daily Hour with me on the ship.
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, uh, um, you know, and like do a contract for a year, or whatever.
I don't think that, um, I, I don't wa- I don't think anybody's gonna wanna pay for this, and I don't want anybody to pay for it, because then, uh, I, they don't wanna peace, and they wanna, they wanna tell me what to do, you know?
Well, you, they, you don't have, you, tell them just like, "I just want to drink all the alcohol and eat all the shrimp, and then do your Daily Hour with me," and just like, that's all you wanna do?
I really like alcohol and shrimp. I think that's you. That's what you-
I wanna eat tacos on Tuesday, drink all the fucking booze, and eat all the fucking shrimp. That's the deal.
Give me, give me a job! Give me a fucking job! That's it, that's how you get a job.
That's telling him to, fucking, that's how I'm gonna fucking work for ya.
Give me a fucking job!
Yeah, if I can show you what the fuck I can do, fucking, I'm gonna sh- fucking show you what the fuck I can do, alright. Let's get this fucking caller over here. This guy from fucking, uh, he's from the fucking west coast, hello, fucking dough. What's your name? What's your name, fucking, fuck?
Yeah.
That could be your, that could be your whole, like, shtick.
That's my shtick. Hey, that's just my shtick. Hey, calm down, calm down. Why are you saying, why are you cursing someone? Just my shtick. Alright, well, the show is getting down to it, we got about five minutes left, I'm gonna cut this message. Hold on for a second.
I'm sorry, I got carried-
Chuck's back.
Yeah.
Back to you, Chuck.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, sorry about that.
Um, no problem. Forgive you, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
You ever gonna, you got Walmart down there? I'm sure you do.
There's like seven in Jones County. What the hell's going on with that?
Well, yellow fellow's calling.
Alright, let me, let me go.
Say hi to the future. Hi, oh, hello. Hel- hello. Yellow fellow.
Hi.
Hello, say hi to the future.
Hi, future.
It's, it's Tuesday. Hi, future.
What's your problem, future? You're crazier.
The show's almost over, we only have about three minutes left.
Cool.
How are you?
Fine.
There's a guy who's dancing around. He's dancing.
I'm fine, I'm fine.
You're fine, that's good. You go to Walmart?
No.
Where do you buy your things?
I don't know.
Yeah? What are you doing?
I'm not, I'm not at Walmart.
You're at Walmart, you buying things?
Buying?
Yeah?
When?
Like now?
Now?
Oh.
You thinking about Walmart?
I thought you said you were at Walmart, yes.
No?
No. Well, then.
Do you like Walmart?
I went there today. I don't know if I like it, but I go there.
Yeah? Why don't you like it? It's a nice place.
I mean, it's, it's a goo- they have a lot of things. You can go there, you can get things, like, anything you want, they have it there. You give them the money, or walk out without the money, but they, uh, it's like a lot of people are there. I mean, it's, it's, uh, I go there all the time.
You can get the horse stuff, right?
I know, I go there all the time, and, um, I get the things, and I just, but I, I don't know about it, like, where, where would it be, where would we be without it, you know?
Why is it called Walmart anyway?
Cause of the Waltons.
The Walmart?
The Waltons, you know all the Waltons?
They do, so they're like Wal's?
The Waltons own, uh, own Walmart, and it's like Walton's Mart.
Walton Mart?
Yes.
Like a mart?
Some guy, they're with the family, the Walton family owns the Walmarts, and then they sell all the things, and, and, and they have people work at the Walmart. And then you work there and get your money, and then you help out the Waltons.
It's kind of inspirational.
Yeah, you could be a Walton.
There should be like an Amazon store.
Yeah, they're doing that store thing. Well, the show's about over.
Whole food.
You should leave some, leave some messages.
I know, they should call it home, they should have, cause they have whole foods, they should have Home Mart.
Home Mart. Where you can buy anything. Alright.
It's a good idea.
It's a good idea. Thanks, yellow fellow, thanks Chuck. Thanks to the past, we're making it, there's more than one guy dancing in the parking lot right now.
Bye-bye.
Alright, bye-bye. Thanks for watching! It's Tuesday. We're on TCTV, channel twenty-two, eleven thirty and two AM, check it out. Wadis Sabian on YouTube, yeah. Three six zero three six three four, from the Mexican TV. Wadis Sabian dot com. Split Horizons, it's a good song, thank you, TCTV, the Baddie Bag, Julie Thomas with the books, Four Star Video, Stopfire.com, Rebecca Mountain, North West, Thurston County, Washington State, USA, thank you, and viewers that you're watching, thank you. Hey, John, where are you? Call me. Hell yeah, dawg! Bye!